All the meeting to order, please rise and salute the flag.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being recorded. Roll call.
Mr. Gigi?
Here.
Mr. O'Hare?
Here.
Mr. Espinola?
Here.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Lemay?
Here.
Mr. Booton?
Here.
Mr. Tatsias?
Here.
Mr. Morin?
Yes. Public appearance, Mr. Booton.
I do have one person signed up from the Administrators Association, Mark Byrne. He's the Director of Plant Services. Mr. Byrne?
First of all, for the record, my name's Mark Byrne. I'm the Director of Plant Services here. I'd like to start out by saying I apologize for jumping before the top ten. So I know it's an important night and I just want to congratulate the parents and the students for that great award. So I'm sorry that I'm taking up some of your time.
We'll save the best for last, no worries.
Okay, alright. So again, my name is Mark Byrne. I'm the Director of Facilities at Greater Lowell and I've been here for fourteen years and very happy with a lot of the staff here and the students and the administrators. On behalf of the Administrative Association, specifically the current direct, we're current direct reports to the Superintendent. And I want to begin by thanking you and allowing us to speak and offer our support during this very important decision-making process that you were going through as we are. We all participate in the candidates' visits last week and found each of the meetings very, very informative. However, we'd like to contribute to the process by identifying some of the qualifications that we see as valuable and that were discussed during the candidates' interviews. Some of the qualifications and upward trends we want to continue with are a Superintendent that demonstrates success in a vocational setting, a Superintendent who has the ability to work collaboratively with staff and students in the communities, a Superintendent who will trust in all the administrative skill sets that are before him, a Superintendent who understands the value of cooperative education, budget development, and capital improvements for Greater Lowell Technical High School. All the things mentioned here will provide Greater Lowell Tech with a leader who will build relationships in our school and more importantly, build relationships in our community. Understanding the Superintendent is a direct report to you, which is a hard job for both the Superintendent and both yourself. And we are direct reports to the Superintendent and we are on the same team and want to be, and want the best for the community, the staff, and most importantly to all of us, the students, more particularly at Greater Lowell Technical High School. We leave you with the following. Tonight, you open a direct line of communications. We want you to know our line of communications are open to you during the Superintendent's process with our group. Thank you for giving us this time. We are confident you will do the best for Greater Lowell Technical High School when you're doing this process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's it, Mr. Chairman? School Community Communications. Report of student rep.
Alright, so for organization in clubs, a group of students attended the ADL's Word of Difference on the Twenty-Second Annual Youth Congress in Boston on March thirtieth. Here, students learned how to identify different types of prejudice that are still found in schools today. Students took part in a number of leadership workshops that helped them teach to speak up and speak out against prejudice. The math team participated in a math meet at Tri-County Regional Vocational Technical High School on Thursday, April sixth, two thousand seventeen. The team finished fifth and fifteenth out of twenty-nine teams. Students from the freshman and sophomore class committees participated in the Merrimack Valley Food Bank's annual spring pantry raid. They assisted with dropping off donation bags in neighborhoods surrounding the school. Donations collected during the pantry raid allow the pantry to provide low-income families with healthy food options. Members of Project Purple took a field trip to Friendly's on May eighth and are planning their annual end-of-the-school-year trip to Kimball's Farms. These trips were organized by members of the group as a positive way to have fun substance-free. GLTHS students will be participating in the Lowell General Hospital Team Walk for Cancer Care on May twenty-first. Students are currently fundraising for the event and are gearing up to walk this weekend. Congratulations to the GLTHS Drama Club who put on a wonderful production of Almost Men. The show was a great success. The senior class is getting excited for their senior week activities. June fifth is Chunky Cinema in Pelham, Mass., I mean, New Hampshire. June sixth, Six Flags in Agawam, Mass. June seventh is a hypnotist and Field Day. June eighth is graduation rehearsal and June ninth is graduation. As for athletics, the boys volleyball team currently stands at twelve and four, qualifying them for an MIA Division One tourney spot. The team also hopes to qualify for the state vocational tournament as they head towards the final week of the regular season. Both baseball and softball have battled weather issues all year and look to get on a roll heading into the final two weeks of the year. Baseball recently picked up a big league win over Chelsea in Northeast, while softball has started trending into the right direction with recent wins over Shashi and Miniman in Greater Lawrence. The track and field team has had a strong season and looks to finish well heading into the CAC League Meet, which is on May twentieth. Tennis also had their share of weather-related challenges but hope to defend their CAC championship as we head toward the league competition on May twenty-third. And the boys and girls across teams have both played hard this season, with the boys recently capturing a good league win over Miniman, while the girls topped Nashua Tech, or Neshoba Tech. That is all.
Anthony, Anthony, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blais. Mr. Chairman?
I'm speaking, okay. Just wanted to thank Anthony for doing a great job this year. And you're a senior and you'll be graduating, will you be attending the last, oh, this is our last meeting, right?
There's one in June, but he'll already be graduated. I don't know if he's coming back or not.
If he's coming back, Anthony, that's what I was gonna ask him.
I'll come back.
I was, I was trying to get out early, myself.
Be here one more time.
Mr. Booton, you had something to say?
I was gonna thank Anthony. I wasn't sure if he was coming back or not. So thank you very much for doing this. I know it's above and beyond and we appreciate, we appreciate what you've done. Good luck in your future.
Thank you, guys.
And again, I just want to thank you for doing a good job. More important, I think you're just representing a lot of the kids in the school who are doing a great job too. And you're getting the message out to us and to everybody that we can tell. And that's, I really think that's a big, big piece of it. Very proud.
And a wrestling champ, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approval of the minutes.
I have a question. Can, can we take an item, an item out of order? The top ten students? What's that?
We're almost there, Mr. Booton.
I still would like to. Okay.
Approval of the minutes, April thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, I need a vote. Seconded by Mr. Espinola.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes. Approval of the minutes of the April eleventh, two thousand seventeen?
So moved.
Second, Mr. Gigi.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes. Approval of the minutes for the April twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, Mr. Booton by Mr. Tatsias.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes. Approval of the twenty, April twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, vote? Mr. Tatsias, Mr. O'Hare.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes. Approval of the minutes for the May second, two thousand seventeen, Mr. Booton, Mr. Tatsias.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes. Report of the treasurer.
Motion to waive the reading on the warrants?
Second.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes. Move to approve the expenditures for the sum of three million, six hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-one cents allocated as follows. Mr. Bahu and Booton.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes. Report of general counsel. Report of the Superintendent Director.
Thank you very much. We've got two very special components in my report. The first two, every once in a while, we have the awarding of a diploma. We have a very special student with us tonight who met all of the graduation requirements of our school but, but didn't quite meet the state's graduation requirements. And she stuck with it and she persevered and she did meet those state requirements. And we are very honored to award her her diploma here this evening. Shelby, come on forward.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I couldn't be more happy for you. You've earned this. Congratulations, good luck.
Good thinking, Ray.
I do this in Disney all the time. Usually houses. I collect phones, too. You guys wanna surround them? Alright. Big smiles.
Mom, are those tears of joy?
That was awesome. Yeah.
And the second item on my report, which, which also is a very special item, is that, as you know, each year at this meeting, we recognize the top ten performing students and senior class of, of almost five hundred students. So we have very, ten very special seniors with us tonight. Ms. Davis is gonna come forward and she's going to introduce them to you. And we're gonna congratulate them as well. A great accomplishment.
I just wanna welcome all of you to Greater Lowell Technical High School. It's my honor and it's my privilege to be here this evening to recognize ten outstanding students who have not only achieved academic, academic and technical excellence, but have really represented core values that we have, we've established here at Greater Lowell. And to thank you for the, for your partnership over the past four years, because they could not have achieved what they achieve without all of your support. As well as all the teachers that are here and administrators, thank you. Thank you for your support. So with that, and I'm sorry I have my back turned, I'd like to start off with Mackenzie Shavoni. Mackenzie Shavoni is the daughter of Alice Stone and Davis Shavoni of Drakett. Mackenzie is ranked tenth in the class of two thousand seventeen. Mackenzie's technical program is medical, laboratory, and assisting. Mackenzie's school and community activities include National Technical Honor Society, National Technical Honor Society Tutor, JV Soccer, Varsity Lacrosse, Swim and Dive Team, Lowell Wish Project. In addition to her activities, Mackenzie participates in the Cooperative Education Program at CVS Pharmacy as a pharmacy technician. Mackenzie is the recipient of the following awards. Coach's Award in Swimming and Lacrosse, MIAA Athletic Holding a three point five GPA, NISCAC Academic All-American, the two thousand seventeen Skills USA District's Medical Terminology Gold Medalist, the two thousand seventeen Skills USA State's Medical Terminology Silver Medalist. Mackenzie is also the recipient of the following scholarships. The John and Abigail Adams Scholarship and the Simmons College Dean Scholarship. Mackenzie plans to attend Simmons College to pursue a degree in nursing and pursue a career as a nurse practitioner. The tenth-ranked student in the class of two thousand seventeen, Mackenzie Shavoni. Michaela Markhu. Michaela Markhu is the daughter of Michael and Amanda Markhu of Drakett. Michaela is ranked ninth in the class of two thousand seventeen. Michaela's technical program is health assisting and pre-nursing. Michaela's school and community activities include the National Technical Honor Society, Skills USA, varsity soccer, varsity track and field, varsity lacrosse, basketball, Bay State Marathon, Alternative House, House of Hope, Greater Lowell Technical High School Summer Program, eighth grade orientation, and the Merrimack Valley Food Bank. In addition to her many community and school activities, Michaela participates in the Cooperative Education Program at Palm Manor as a Certified Nursing Assistant. Michaela is the recipient of the following awards. Perfect Attendance, Outstanding Achievement in Health Assisting Pre-Nursing Shop, and High Honor Roll. Michaela is also the recipient of the following scholarships. The John and Abigail Adams Scholarship and the Presidential Scholarship. Michaela plans to attend Plymouth State University and pursue a degree in nursing. The number ninth-ranked student in the class of two thousand seventeen, Michaela Markhu. Anthony Silva. Anthony Silva is the son of Nicole Kokolsky and Daniel Silva of Lowell. Anthony is ranked eighth in the class of two thousand seventeen. Anthony's technical program is engineering technology. Anthony has distinguished himself by participating in the Cooperative Education Program. He is currently employed by WB Engineering in Boston, working to assist the engineering department with multiple projects, including markups and testing new programs. Additionally, he creates new layouts for fire protection systems. Anthony is the recipient of the following awards. Perfect Attendance and High Honors. Anthony is also recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Anthony plans to pursue a degree in mechanical engineering at the University of Massachusetts Lowell. His future plans include working in the aerospace industry. The number eighth-ranked student in the class of two thousand seventeen, Anthony Silva. Rachel Rinaldi. Rachel Rinaldi is the daughter of Dawn Hollywood and Christian Rinaldi of Lowell. She is ranked seventh in the class, seventh in the class of two thousand seventeen. Rachel's technical program is cosmetology. In addition to working a part-time job, Rachel has been a member of the varsity volleyball and lacrosse team all four years at Greater Lowell Technical High School. Rachel is the recipient of the following awards. CAC All-Star Volleyball, Lowell Sun All-Star Volleyball, Most Valuable Player in Volleyball. Rachel is also the recipient of the following scholarships. Founder's Merit Scholarship and the Student Success Scholarship. Rachel plans to attend Revere University to pursue a degree in nursing. Her future plans are to be a pediatric nurse. The number seven-ranked student in the class of two thousand seventeen, Rachel Rinaldi. Gage Overby. Gage Overby is the son of Kimberly Grandin of Lowell. Gage is ranked sixth in the class of two thousand seventeen. Gage's technical program is engineering technology. Gage has distinguished himself by participating in our Cooperative Education Program. He is currently employed by Sieg, is it Sieg? Segway Manufacturing, working with the engineering department on a variety of project-based tasks. Gage has been able to conduct quality-controlled tests and run capacity-resistant tests to document parts' performance. Most recently, he has begun to diagnose problems with bad parts and RFQs. Gage is a recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Gage plans to attend the University of Massachusetts Lowell to pursue a degree in plastics engineering. His future plans include becoming a plastics engineer and to travel the world. The number sixth-ranked student in the class of two thousand seventeen, Gage Overby. Erin Royal. Erin is not with us this, this evening. Erin is the daughter of Catherine Renaud and Robert Royal of Lowell. Erin is ranked fifth in the class of two thousand seventeen. Erin's technical program is health assisting and pre-nursing. Erin has, has achieved many certificates in her technical area. An Alzheimer's certification, Certified Nurses Assistant, Home Health Aid Certification, and CPR Certification. Erin's school and community activities include Skills USA, peer tutor, lacrosse, volleyball, and the Bay State Marathon. In addition to her activities, Erin participates in the Cooperative Education Program at New England Pediatric Care as a Certified Nursing Assistant. Erin is the recipient of the following awards. Honor Roll Top Ten All Four Years at Greater Lowell Technical High School in Early Action Award. She also is the recipient of the Founder's Scholarship in Colby Sawyer College Grant. Erin plans to attend Colby Sawyer College to pursue a degree in nursing while she plays lacrosse. She plans to pursue a career in pediatric nursing. The number fifth-ranked student in the class of two thousand seventeen, Erin Royal. Macy Lepan. Macy Lepan is the daughter of Stephen and Donna Lepan of Drakett. Macy is ranked fourth in the class of two thousand seventeen. Macy's technical program is health assisting pre-nursing. Macy's school and community activities include the National Technical Honor Society, Skills USA, peer tutoring, basketball, varsity soccer and varsity track and field, the Bay State Marathon, Panic in the Dark Race, NEPC Cool Kids Road Race, and Filling Food for the Homeless for the Rotary. In addition to her school and community activities, Macy participates in the Cooperative Education Program at Deauville Life and Wellness Community as a Certified Nursing Assistant. Macy is the recipient of the following awards. Most Valuable Player Track and Field, two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen. Coach's Award for Track and Field. Defensive Most Valuable Player Track and Field. Defensive Most Valuable Player Track and Field Homecoming Game. High Honor Roll All Four Years at Greater Lowell. Macy is also the recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship and the Greater Lowell Road Runner Scholarship. Macy plans to attend Colby Sawyer College and pursue a degree in nursing. The number fourth-ranked student in the class of two thousand seventeen, Macy Lepan. Marissa Helms. Marissa Helms is the, is the daughter of David and Pamela Helms of Tingsborough. Marissa is ranked number three in the class of two thousand seventeen. Marissa's technical program is engineering technology. Marissa is actively involved in Westford, West Chelmsford United Methodist Church Route Youth Group, horseback riding at Chase Farms of Hollis, art classes at the Lighthouse Art School of Lowell. Marissa is also a member of the Greater Lowell Swim Team and Track and Field Team. Marissa is the recipient of the Academic All-American Award. She is also the recipient of the following scholarships. The John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, Mass. Art Merit Scholarship, and West Chelmsford United Methodist Church Youth Scholarship. Marissa plans to attend the Massachusetts College of Art and Design to pursue an undergraduate and master's degree in architectural design. The number three-ranked student in the class of two thousand seventeen, Marissa Helms. Lucas Filetra. Lucas Filetra is the son of Jeffrey and Marcela Filetra of Drakett. Lucas is ranked second in his class and is the salutatorian of the class of two thousand seventeen. Lucas's technical program is electronics technology. He has maintained a rigorous course of study, which includes dual enrollment courses. He has participated in the Cooperative Education Program since his junior year, where he has been employed at Charm Sciences in Lawrence and Andover, and works as an assembly technician. Lucas is a member of the National Technical Honor Society and Skills USA, where he has been a district and state-level competitor. He is a National Academy of Future Scientists and Technologies delegate. Lucas also volunteers his time in his community at the Lowell Humane Society. In addition to leadership and volunteer activities, Lucas is a recipient of many awards and scholarships, including the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Lucas plans to pursue an undergraduate and master's degree in computer science at the University of Massachusetts Lowell. The second-ranked student and the salutatorian of the class of two thousand seventeen, Lucas Filetra. Nicholas LaFave. Nicholas LaFave is the son of Stephen and Donna LaFave of Drakett. Nicholas is ranked number one and is the valedictorian of the class of two thousand seventeen. Nicholas's technical program is engineering technology. He has maintained a rigorous course of study, which has included High Honors and dual enrollment courses. Nicholas is a member of the National Technical Honor Society, a school council student representative. His leadership qualities also extend to the athletic field, where he's, he has been captain of the tennis team for the last two years. And I have to say that I just found this out, this year, he is currently undefeated on the tennis team. So congratulations, Jessica. Nicholas has maintained a cooperative education position since his junior year at RGC Millwork in Lowell, where he is a CAD draftsman. He was recently named Greater Lowell Technical High School's Cooperative Education Student of the Year. Nicholas is a recipient of many awards and scholarships. Outstanding Achievement in Engineering Technology, National Merit Scholarship Corporation Commendation Letter, Outstanding Vocational Technical Student Award, Worcester Polytech Institute Merit Award, John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, and the UMass Lowell Dean Scholarship. Nicholas plans to attend the University of Massachusetts Lowell to obtain a degree in biotechnology. The number one-ranked student and the valedictorian of the class of two thousand seventeen, I'm so emotional, Nicholas LaFave. As you can see how proud I am. Congratulations to all of the students tonight and to all of their parents. We should all be very proud of their achievements. They're actually my first class, I'm sorry. Got this position. So when I first got this position, they were freshmen and freshmen. So I'm. Evolved a bit. It just hit me. Thank you very much.
I gotta get my stuff together. I mean, I was so emotional. Since entering the first class, when I was started, they were freshmen, so it sounded like I felt a relationship with them.
You followed them.
Yes, I have.
You guys gotta stay there for another, like, half hour, forty-five minutes. Then we'll be done. You're free to go. Thank you all very much. Congratulations again.
Well, Drake was representative.
Five out of ten, top two. We did well last year, too.
We have a large percentage. Four hundred twenty-one, I think.
Paul's got a thousand something.
Well, that's forty percent, right?
We'd like a few more, but you're...
Paul's at my desk. You should probably call for a five-minute recess just to play a little.
I've been waiting for three and a half years to do this. I'd like to call for a five-minute recess, please. I got a second from Curtis.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two out-of-state requests. The first one is for...
Need back in session?
I believe we are. So, my first out-of-state travel request, as you know, recently at the state convention for Skills USA, the state conference, we had nine students that qualified to go on to the Nationals at Louisville, Kentucky. So, I'd be asking permission for the nine students who qualified to go out and compete, as well as four staff members to go with them in June 24th, from June, I guess, nineteenth to the 24th, where it's outside of New England, requesting out-of-state travel. Actually, out-of-New-England travel.
Would that be at a cost to the school?
We have money budgeted for Skills USA for all of the different competitions, the local competition, the district, the state, and then Nationals.
So, on a different note, there is some cheerleaders that ended up going to a competition, and they're trying to raise money. What is the difference between the cheerleaders going and the Skills USA people going? Because they're raising money, they're having fundraisers, and they're trying to get everybody to go. I just want to know the difference between the skills and the cheerleaders.
I guess I'm at a little disadvantage because I'm not aware of the cheerleaders, where they're going. Skills is, just like cheerleading is an interscholastic sport, skills is extracurricular, you know, extracurricular as well, co-curricular. I don't know whether the cheerleaders are going to something that's above and beyond what they normally would do within the team. But I can find out for you, Joe.
I've been to a couple of fundraisers for them, and, like, I'm not opposed to it. I think it's great, and congratulations to them.
I made a motion. Second.
Mr. Giggy?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
And my second request for out-of-New-England travel is for five of our math teachers to attend a Great Minds Institute in New York. It's an innovative math curriculum that we're implementing. There's some information in your packet as well. They would be gone from August 15th to the 18th to attend this conference.
Motion approved.
Mr. Booton. Mr. Tatsias.
Mr. Giggy?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
And the monthly corp report is in your packet as well. We actually are looking at an increase over last year of four percent to thirty-nine percent of the senior class and twelve percent of the junior class, a total of two hundred and forty-seven paid cooperative education placements. And the fifth item on my agenda on my report is seeking your approval for the 2017-2018 school calendar, which I believe we sent you one, but there's a couple of minor changes, and I think that that's, has that been passed out to everybody? And the minor changes are in blue on the new copies.
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Giggy?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Excuse me, I'm yawning, yes.
Sorry. Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Try to make my report more exciting. We got two more shots at it. I know, I got two more shots at it. Let me see what I can do here. Each year at this time, I ask your approval of school choice per the DESE requirement. What we usually do is there's generally a motion to accept school choice students, provided the waitlist has been exhausted or a student, a current student moves out of district. That's generally the motion that we approve.
Mr. Espinola.
Mr. Giggy?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
And the last item would be at the conclusion of our meeting, if we could go into executive session to discuss negotiation strategy. I'd appreciate that.
Mr. Tatsias. You're welcome.
We'll just do the motion to go into executive session at the conclusion of the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent?
I reported the business manager.
You want to take the speaker out of order?
Hello.
Hi.
I have three things. One is we need to vote on the transfers that are attached in your packet.
Make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Espinola by Mr. Booton.
Mr. Giggy?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
So, the next thing that I have is financial reporting. With the superintendent leaving and not knowing what the new superintendent's financial background will be, we've been working on a financial dashboard so that we can provide more information to the board and to the superintendent on a monthly basis. So, you've been receiving this packet that shows year-to-date spent and all the details from the Munis report. We would continue to give you that, but I put a sample of some other form, like, it's a year-to-date budget report that shows projections by category, and it summarizes by net school spending category and non-net school spending. So, you would get an estimated surplus and deficit monthly, plus your net school spending, where I see us meeting net school spending, plus the bottom part is a formula that's built-in that we can tweak so that it shows where you extend with your E and D, whether we're at 4.2% or getting close to 5% based on the monthly projections. So, I'm preparing that, and I'm comparing to other school districts to see what they offer their boards and their superintendents, to see if we can offer more. If you have any ideas based upon things people ask you, if you share that with me through emails or whatever, I can find a way of incorporating that into a financial dashboard for you monthly. And then, the next thing is a surplus. We want to, we need to vote on the surplus disposal of chairs from the graphics department.
Mr. Bahu, a question?
I do, I actually have a question. On this new report that you're going to be sending us, maybe putting it up packet, thanks for taking the initiative to do something like this. I think this has been a long time coming. And let me ask you, could you send it to us by email?
Absolutely. Yes.
I think that way we'll have more time to review it and such like that.
Nice.
A lot of times, we're sort of, you know, looking at our computer more than we are grabbing the packet and such like that, so...
Right, well, that would be great, because as I said, Roger was an expert at this and helped me learn, and it's going to be good for me to share it with someone on a monthly basis so that questions are asked, you know, so, yeah, I'll do it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Espinola.
Ms. Turner, I just want to assure you that as the board is interviewing the candidates, we will find somebody who has a good grasp of the budgets and the financials of the school system. So, you said that you're not sure where the financial background is, but I know that everybody has it in their mind to grab that portion of their skill sets.
I'm sure, but at the same, you know, with the same thing in mind, I just want to make sure that I'm able to provide you with the information that we weren't...
And I will echo Mr. Bahu's comments, saying thank you very much, because I think that is a very good tool for us.
Mr. O'Hair.
Just one, one little item on the surplus equipment. You listed as surplus and damage. Are we using them some other place, or are we just getting rid of them? To me, it sounds like you're saving them, and I'm wondering why you're saving them.
Well, because now it's to a point where if we have money to replace them, we can't, we don't want to leave them in here. We have to get your approval to get them.
Right, right.
They're broken and...
They're going to be disposed of if you approve this, they're going to be thrown out.
Motion approved the surplus disposal of the table chairs.
Mr. Tatsias.
Mr. Giggy?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Absolutely.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
It's not a yay or an aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
There was a vote in the affirmative.
Old business.
Aye or nay is here. Old business.
Any items on the agenda brought up under this section will be discussed purposes. Only does anybody have a thing to say, you want to move on? Under new business, I would ask the school's board's permission to have this gentleman come up as a public speaker. He didn't have a chance to get here early on, and he would like to make a comment about the upcoming superintendent.
Should suspend the rules?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay.
Mr. Giggy?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
I was going to ask, please say his name.
Mr. Chairman Don Peterson, he's a parent from Dracket, Massachusetts. Thank you, welcome.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for so generously offering me this opportunity. I was late for the meeting due to parental duties, which I'm sure most of us can relate to. But that's precisely the reason for me wanting to make these comments. All of us here, all of us here, whether we're elected officials, or whether we're superintendents, or whether we are parents, or multiples of the above, are all involved with the school for the same purpose. Our duties, your duties, are once or twice removed from the students of the school. The future superintendent will be once or twice removed from the students of the school. And the parents, or teachers, as I was as well, are either directly related to the students, or oftentimes, we wish we would be several levels removed from the students. But the point is that regardless of where our duties lie, they all come back to one common purpose, and that is, the whole purpose of the school is the success of the students, their education, their development of character, hopefully, and as well as education. And in that regard, we are, all of you guys are involved in the selection of the next superintendent, and that's a, you know, a huge thing that, God help you, go in peace, because that's a tough one. But as a parent, I think I have a perspective on, and my own personal recommendation for the next superintendent, right? And that would be a guy right here within the school, who you may or may not know beyond your interview process. I know him from both working as a teacher under his guidance, substitute, substitute, you know, and a parent in the school with a child in the school, another one years back. And I can say, from that perspective, you could do no better honor to your positions as, and responsibilities as, you know, elected school board, school committee, same thing, right, than to go with Michael Barton as the next superintendent. In my opinion, ever-humble opinion, he offers a very unique and valuable perspective as a guy who was, we were just talking a minute ago, you folks were talking a minute ago, about somebody who has a knowledge of the finances of the school, and where the money goes, and how it goes, and how it's supposed to be spent. Well, this guy is right within the very system on a day-to-day basis. Formerly with the history department, under which I was working with him, and now curriculum. Curriculum is what we're all about, you know, of course, we're a tech school, so very unique, very unique educational experience within a tech school. My whole family, my father was a director, they called the director back then, back in Connecticut. We have a very unique mission in a technical school. And this guy, from my perspective, as both a parent and a former teacher, and a voter, is that this guy would make an enormous contribution to the overall mission here at the school. Not only because he's in it and sees the, you know, the day-to-day operation, knows our strengths, knows our weaknesses, I think he would also make an enormous contribution to the morale of the teachers and administration as well. Now, remember, superintendent is one, you know, and teachers, too, in a way, are removed one step from the students, certainly supervisors are, but the mission's the same. The bottom line is the students. And he's had experience with both, at both levels, in administration, right there across the hall, and, you know, curriculum.
Excuse me.
Sorry, I'm...
We have your point taken, and...
Point taken, and I'll shut up now. That's, that's all right. It's the Irish side, sorry.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I also have some orders that were sent by Deborah Bashan. I'd like to circulate that at some point. She wasn't able to attend.
Okay, yeah, you can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, business, so that's new business. Committee person motion, motion by Mr. O'Hair for a review of the rates for the use of the facilities.
That's old business, right?
No. It's new business.
It's a motion.
I thought we talked about it last time. Okay.
Said he was going to make a motion this week.
What's the motion, like, to...
The motion is for a review of the rates for the use of facilities.
Okay, I'll second it.
Yeah, if I may speak on that, it was, I was approached by some people that used that field, the baseball field, for a long period of time. Unfortunately, that, we are not renting space unless it's a very high, unless certain employees are hired to maintain what was maintained before by custodians that were...
Well, this guy is right within the very system on a day-to-day basis, formerly with the history department, under which I was working with him, and now curriculum. Curriculum is what we're all about, you know, of course, we're a tech school, so very unique, very unique educational experience within a tech school. My whole family, my father was a director, they called the director back then, back in Connecticut. We have a very unique mission in a technical school, and this guy, from my perspective as both a parent and a former teacher and a voter, is that this guy would make an enormous contribution to the overall mission here at the school. Not only because he's in it and sees the, you know, the day-to-day operation, knows our strengths, knows our weaknesses, I think he would also make an enormous contribution to the morale of the teachers and administration as well. Now, remember, superintendent is one, you know, and teachers, too, in a way, are removed one step from the students, certainly as supervisors are, but the mission's the same. The bottom line is the students, and he's had experience with both, at both levels, in administration right there across the hall, and, you know, curriculum.
Excuse me?
Sorry.
We have your point taken and...
Your point taken, and I'll shut up now.
Appreciate...
That's, that's all right. It's the Irish side, sorry.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I also have some waters that were sent by Deborah Bashan. I'd like to circulate that at some point. She wasn't able to attend.
Okay, yeah, you can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, business, so this is new business. Committee person motion, motion by Mr. O'Hair for a review of the rates for the use of the facilities.
That's old business, right?
Nope. It's new business.
It's a motion.
I thought we talked about it last time. Okay.
Said he was going to make a motion this month.
What's the motion, like, to...
The motion is for a review of the rates for the use of facilities.
Okay, I'll second it.
Yeah, if I may speak on that, it was, I was approached by some people that used that field, the baseball field, for a long period of time. Unfortunately, that, we are not renting space unless it's a very high, unless certain employees are hired to maintain what was maintained before by custodians that were working during the evening or during the time of, basically, it's, the campuses locked up, and they didn't, they don't have any use of that unless they want to pay the going rate for custodial staff that would maintain the field. And it just becomes almost impossible for those people to use the field. I'm just saying that, is it too late that we can't make some adjustment that the over-the-hill gang, they're not youngsters or young people that are a little more active than the old timers, but they're looking for a place to play, a place that they played for many years is not available at this particular time. And I feel as though that we should, you know, as a school decide, we should make some provisions that they can use the field, never damaged it as they had in the past.
So, it sounds like it would be some sort of another motion to make financial transfers somewhere so that these people can use the fields?
I'm not, I'm not going to organize who's going to go to these fields or how much it's going to, but I'm just telling you, it has been used for a period of time, and there was, because we had custodial staff on duty, they would pay, or they still paid, but now where we don't have custodial staff on certain days, that the rate would be full pay for a custodian, double the pay for two custodians, et cetera.
So, I can give you a little bit more information. Group using the fields, they're paying, I believe it's fifteen dollars an hour to use the fields. What we recently uncovered, which we weren't aware of, is that we're paying somebody forty-seven dollars an hour to come in so that they can use the fields for fifteen dollars an hour. So, the school has been incurring a cost to allow people to use the fields. It was a grounds person. Even though we had a person in security, they're not out at the field, so whenever these folks were coming in and using them on the weekends, the school was paying forty-seven dollars and taking in fifteen. So, I think what we communicated to them was that they needed to pay the full amount of our costs so that it wasn't costing the school money out of the education budget to let them use the fields. They were made aware of this with very short notice before their baseball season was starting, so what I agreed to do was to honor the commitment from the past, but the next year that they'd really be looking at, you know, I've always told people that you can use this building as long as it doesn't cost the school anything. A lot of times, they use the gym, and the custodians and the security guys are already here. But this practice in the past that I don't think anyone picked up on was that we were, it wasn't good business practice, we were renting it out for fifteen, and it was costing us forty-seven to rent that out for fifteen. So, that's the issue. It's not an issue for this summer because I did feel that they, when they approached us back, that, you know, they didn't know about it to be able to make other plans. So, now they know about it for next year, that this is the issue, and we're more than happy to let them use it for our costs, but not to cost money that we would normally use for students' education. But that's the issue. But they're all set for this summer, George.
Thank you.
So, would it be forty-seven plus the fifteen for administrative?
That would normally, they're not a nonprofit, they're, you know, they're a baseball league that they get together, and they have a lot of fun and all that, so they wouldn't be able to apply as a nonprofit to get anything waived. But we wouldn't normally, we would waive a rental fee for a nonprofit, say, to use the pool or the gym, but that's when the building's already staffed. If the building's not staffed and there's no one here, then even a nonprofit has to pay for the cost of us sending somebody out here on overtime so that they can use it.
Is that a forty-seven dollars total or an hourly rate?
That's an hourly rate, so right now they're paying fifteen an hour, which is the field